First of all, happy Halloween, everyone. Why don't we start with the appointment by the Chief Judge Maureen Murphy? Ms. Murphy, how are you? Good. First of all, congratulations on your selection. And now, if you don't mind, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, sure. I just want to thank, first of all, the administration for their continued confidence in reappointing me to as an administrative law judge. It's hard to believe. It's been three years and I was in front of you all last. Time flies. I've enjoyed being an administrative law judge. It's a very challenging job. It's interesting, never a dull moment. And as far as my background, I think you all know, when I was here last, I think I said that I felt uniquely qualified for the job. And that was because I had spent 13 years at the Board of Appeals. I was actually Tom Cork's, actually originally Sam Moxley's appointment, and then Tom Cork's appointment. And so, three years ago, I said that, and I guess I feel even more uniquely qualified to continue in the job because, as I've said, I've been doing that for the last three years. And so, born and bred in Baltimore County, went to Loyola University, graduated from law school locally here, and got my Master's in Real Estate Development from Johns Hopkins. So, I live in, I grew up in the first district, but I am now a resident of the second district.
Who's that?
I know. There's a competition between you two. Two very good districts. So, I know both of them very well. I practiced law with my dad for 27 years in Catonsville. My parents and family are still there. And so, but, and so, that's really it.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from the members?
What high school? So, it's closed, Archbishop Keough.
Oh, we know Archbishop.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Dayton Avenue.
Before, it was Seton Keough, actually. So, I go way back. Next to Cardinal Givens, and they're both closed.
St. Agnes. So, I guess, Ms. Murphy, I guess my question for you, and most of these things are, you know, we appreciate your willingness to serve. And I guess, I don't know if any of the members want to say anything about, so many times, we have so many issues that end up at the, in front of you for adjudication, and some of the issues seem to be, you know, really big deals with the community. And one of which is the number of people living in a house. And that seems to be an issue that we're going to have a lot of conversations on coming up shortly in the next cycle. But do you have any comments on your interpretation of the law as we write them as it relates to people living in homes that not supposed to? Mainly, it's an issue right around colleges and universities, but it also takes place in other communities as well, where people start renting rooms.
Right, they do. Not more than two unrelated adults living in, you know, in the same house. And the cases come up often with code enforcement. They're difficult to prove because it relies on the neighbors who have to spend their time monitoring the property and seeing who's coming and going, monitoring the cars that are there. And sometimes you have, you know, it can be really transient. It can be workers who work, you know, a certain job, and then they're gone 30 days later. Those are tough cases, yes. But, you know, you get a certain community who's vigilant about it, but unfortunate, that's unfortunate for the community that have to do that, but that's when they typically come up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Alvin. Thank you. Ms. Murphy, I want you to talk about the deference that you think the administrative law judge should give to community organizations. We're going to be having a lot of discussion here about the Red Maple Project. I did not agree with your opinion on that, but I think there's people in this room who felt that that project should have been modified or stopped. And I just want you to speak to that.
Sure. The Protestants in that case were, I know that they petitioned for downzoning in the cycle before that case was heard, and I know that that didn't take place. So, the zoning on the property was the highest possible density that was, you know, allowable under the zoning regulations. The community was very much, they did see it as their green space. In other words, they would have preferred that it would be purchased as a park or something like that. Unfortunately, two different property owners owned that property. They're two different parcels, and I know that that case is on appeal. I'm not saying anything that you can't see in the record. And so, the community, it's very important to hear from the community. Oftentimes, you'll have, you know, the community's input will change a case. It'll turn a case. You know, I've seen that in many cases, and, you know, particularly where you have, for example, you know, a use that somebody wants to put in, and the traffic is an issue, for example. Sometimes you'll see the community who's lived in the same place for 30 years, they're more qualified often to discuss the roadway and discuss every nuance of the road, every pothole, you know, when it snows, when it rains. And we've had cases, you know, turn on in favor of what the community is saying because they're often more qualified than a traffic expert who comes in, you know, who saw the property, you know, the day before. And so, that has happened. And so, we have, there have been times where, you know, the Protestants' testimony in that regard has been significant. And so, I know in the Red Maple case, the evidence was in favor of the developer. At the Board of Appeals, they reversed it. At the Circuit Court level, the Circuit Court affirmed my decision, and so, I know it's on appeal in the appellate courts now. And so, I don't know if that answers your question, but I know it was a very difficult situation for those, that community because of all the years that, you know, that has been, you know, the, I guess, intrusion into their neighborhood. So, you know, the Bee Gees substation, Blacken Decker, all that, you know, there were many years of, you know, takings and intrusions into their neighborhood. So, I listened to them, and I was very interested in the history of it, and they were very compelling. Just in the end, the evidence is, as you know, we have to rule on the evidence, so...
Is your opinion on whether master plan or community plans should supersede local zoning?
Well, if it's a, if it's a development plan, the master plan has to, it has to be consistent with the master plan. Community plans are often incorporated into the master plan. Sometimes you'll have even an intermediary type of plan that's incorporated into the master plan. So, you know, oftentimes, it has to be, you know, the development plan has to be consistent with the master plan, and that's under the H&amp;S case that says that the master plan is binding on development plans.
It's a very relevant discussion because we're going to be adopting a new master plan. And community advocates have said for years that community plans and master plans should have a certain amount of clout, right? And so, I was interested in getting your perspective on it. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you or voting for you Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next appointment we have is Dr. Bam Gardner, Baumgardner. Hello, Mr. Baumgardner. How are you?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I'm well, thanks. How are you?
Going well. If you don't mind, again, we would ask you to tell us a little bit about yourself as well.
Sure. Again, my name is Derek Baumgardner. I'm a land use and environmental attorney with the law firm of Whiteford, Taylor &amp; Preston. I split my time between our Towson and our Baltimore City offices. Prior to private practice, I was a hearing examiner with the Montgomery County Office of Zoning and Administrative Hearings. Prior to that, I worked in Baltimore City Government for the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals as General Counsel and Executive Director of that agency. I am very familiar with Baltimore County area. I've lived in and around the county the majority of my adult life. I went to high school in Towson, undergrad at Loyola, and then graduated school and law school at the University of Baltimore. Looking forward to this position. I think it's a very important one. Looking forward to a return to public service. It's a special thing to be in public service. I think when we do it day in and day out, we can forget that at times, but I can tell you for a fact, when you're in the private sector for a while, you look back fondly on public, on public sector work. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Well, again, congratulations on your nomination, and thank you for coming in today. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Ram Gardner, where do you live? What neighborhood do you live in now?
I live just south of the county line, across from Belvedere Square Market.
Okay. South of Belvedere Square?
That's correct.
So, you live in the city?
Correct.
That's interesting. Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members? All right. Well, thank you very much for coming in, and we appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you all very much.
Next, we will move on to another appointment, Mr. Andrew Belt. Mr. Belt, how are you, sir?
I'm well. Good afternoon.
If you don't mind, again, tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right. I started my career as a Baltimore County middle school teacher, went to school in the evenings for law, started my career at the Baltimore County State's Attorney's Office, then went into private practice in 2007. I was fortunate when Councilman Gardena appointed me to the Baltimore County Board of Appeals. That was my first term of appointment. I'm now on my sixth, and in my 16th year, but Councilman Marks has appointed me five times after Councilman Gardena. So, I have been working at the Board of Appeals. I worked with Ms. Murphy for 13 years at the Board of Appeals while still continuing my private practice, doing personal injury and criminal work. At this point in time, I live right south of Rogers Forge, over the city-county line in Baltimore County, and always lived in that area. I went to Towson High School, Towson University, where I also taught as an adjunct for several years.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Belt. Again, congratulations on your nomination, but thank you so much for your service thus far. We certainly appreciate it very much for having an extensive background, starting as a school teacher. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members? I had a quick item for, sure. Andy, you, it's so good that David kept you in the fifth district, and I couldn't get you for the sixth district as my Board of Appeals person, but would you like to say anything about being on the Board of Appeals and how that may help being AOJ?
Well, first thing, the subject area for zoning and development is a pretty unique, you know, jurisprudence that you have to learn, so I've had the opportunity to learn that. But I think the most benefit that I've gotten from the Board is learning how to interact with all the players, with the people. I'm a people person. I enjoy the law, but I enjoy the lawyers, I enjoy the community members. So, I think I've developed an acumen and a judicial presence that, you know, I get along well with people, and I enjoy that. I think my time on the Board of Appeals prepares that I won't have two friends on either side. I'll be all by myself, but I think, you know, it's really been a valuable learning experience that you can only do by running hearings and interacting with the public. Thank you.
Councilman Marks?
Thank you. When I was elected to the County Council, I was faced with the decision of whether to reappoint Mr. Belt, and I went to various lawyers, and some that had more experience with community organizations, and some that had more experience with business entities. And they universally said that Mr. Belt was an outstanding member of the Board of Appeals, and that has borne out. This is a very important, special post for me because my father served in that position when I was in college. So, I saw what he put into that. And after hearing from those lawyers and from others who had gone before the Board of Appeals, it was very obvious you were the right person for the Board of Appeals, and that's why, indeed, I renominated you numerous times. I am so happy you've been nominated for this position by the County Executive. You are fair. You're a good listener. You're highly intelligent. You will give everyone a fair shake before your position. I have no doubt you are going to be an outstanding administrative law judge. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Yes, Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Belt, I noticed that you listed Deborah Dopkin and Jason Garber as references, and so I think that speaks very well for you because they're both highly talented attorneys, very professional, and so, I think, you know, to me, that sways me quite a bit in your direction, having those two people as references.
Thank you. So, you mentioned the state's attorney. That was Sandy O'Connor, right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, so you cut your teeth under her, one of our best state's attorneys, and, you know, again, you've served in numerous capacities. You're going to do a great job here. Good luck.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Belt. We look forward to seeing you Monday, or at least voting on you, voting for you Monday.
Yes. Sure. Absolutely.
So, I wanted to just give a quick shout-out to our new intern here in the sixth district, and I can see she's very excited to be introduced. Her name is Aneme Ekpe. Did I screw that up? I think I got it pretty close, right? Aneme comes to us, she is a true sixth district intern in the sense that she grew up on the east side of the district, went to Red House Run Elementary School and Golden Ring Middle, and then went to high school through the LPP program at Towson High School, and is now a Towson University student on the SGA as well at Towson University. So, we're very excited to have her aboard, and give her a big round of applause for the... Okay. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Now, we move on to page eight. Mr. Bob Smith, Wreckin' Parks, contract. Laudner Klein Landscape Architecture. Hello, Mr. Smith?
Hello, Council Chair. Members of the County Council, good evening. The Department, the Administration of the Department is seeking approval for a 92F contract for the Oregon Ridge Trail Design Project with the selected contractor of Laudner Klein. Contract's total compensation amount, including renewals, will not exceed $491,220 with compensation. Laudner Klein contract was previously selected by the county to perform a comprehensive review and develop an overall master plan for the Oregon Ridge Park. Laudner Klein Landscape Architects demonstrated exceptional work in curating and fostering high levels of community input and trust throughout the master plan project after a period of established distrust, sometimes, between the community and the department. The robust community input, the trail system at Oregon Ridge was identified as the top priority of need, of needed improvement from the master plan. As such, the Department of Recreation and Parks would now like to develop a trail system design plan based on this being a top priority of trail improvement outlined in the master plan project, as well as to address safety concerns on the trails. The Trail Plan Design Project will use evaluations from the master plan and put in a design plan into place, provide concept designs permitting stormwater management, final plans and details on how to build new trails, maintain existing trails, and provide important stream crossings. So, we're seeking approval for this contract.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Kim?
Yes, Councilman Katz?
Yes. Mr. Smith, I want to thank you and the administration for the process that you followed with the blueprint for Oregon Ridge. All I can tell you is that the public is very happy because, obviously, the county did listen to public input, which is, to me, very important and to the community, and I thank you.
Yes, sir. Important to us as well.
And I do have a request for you on a different matter.
Yes, sir.
So, all you. There's a hearing, I think, November 14th, on the bike trail from, like, Roland up to Ashland. Can I see a copy of the...
I don't believe that trail is with us. That may be DPWT, sir.
I can't hear you.
That would not be with Recreation and Parks. It'd be DPWT, Public Works and Transportation, I do believe.
Is, I don't think he has it here. So, if you can get me a copy of that.
Sir?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any additional questions, comments from the members? Thank you very much. Now, we move on to page 12.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the County Council. The Administration is requesting approval of a contract with the Maryland Association of Nonprofit Organizations to provide technical assistance, education, and training services to community-based organizations that are either located in or are serving residents in our county's designated ARPA areas. This will also include many of the ARPA sub-receipients who are currently serving or receiving grant support from the county. The contract was competitively bid and is for $299,288. While there was a 30% WBE-MBE goal, the Maryland Association of Nonprofits is using experts while delivering these services, and anticipates that people of color will comprise 59% of the team, and women will be 60% of the team that are engaged by the county. When the County Executive's Transition Team Report was issued, it highlighted the value of and the need for additional support for nonprofit groups and community-based organizations. This was reemphasized in the Enterprise Strategic Plan, Enterprise-wide Strategic Plan that's been adopted, and is the guidebook really for the county's efforts and the administration. So, at the beginning of the administration, we recognized that there was clearly unmet needs that needed to be addressed and a lack of capacity in a lot of the organizations that are in the county. Unfortunately, we saw this, or doubled down on this issue during the pandemic, where many of the organizations themselves were very eager to support and help in the community, but we found that they had very limited resources and capacity to really do the work that needed to be done. In the Department of Planning, Office of Community Engagement, in GRSI, and also the Office of Immigrant Affairs, we're regularly encountering groups that are interested in undertaking projects, but too often have limited resources in order to deliver. Whether it's budgeting for and managing projects, which is very hard, or building boards up and networks of support is equally difficult, even navigating funding opportunities sometimes have been a challenge. This is one of the reasons that we've, we're contracting with Maryland Association of Nonprofit Organizations, so they will work with these organizations to overcome these various barriers. The goal of this contract is simple. It's to provide technical assistance and improve and expand the knowledge and skills of the community groups and the other community-based organizations, so they can leverage more funding, be more self-sustaining, and really be good partners for the county. Because I think, as we all recognize, the county is often asked to undertake tasks in the communities, and our resources themselves are limited. So, having the capability on the ground as our partners is invaluable. We've not determined which organizations will yet be chosen to participate. We expect to cast a wide net across all the different districts and variety of organizations. It could include groups like the Assistance Center of Towson Churches, the newly formed Greater Randalls Town CDO, Southwest Visions, various local chambers of commerce, North Point Coordinating Council, or many others. The work will begin with a needs assessment, which will enable Maryland Associates and nonprofits and the county to identify the most pressing needs and areas in which help and support are needed. This could include board development, language and technology barriers from some organizations, technical reporting and compliance, financial systems that some may or may not have, or may not have fully built, fundraising, digital and social media, and even staff recruitment and development for organizations that may have staff already but want to see expansion. So, the contract is to provide guidance and support to these nonprofit groups, and we believe that the ARPA funds will be important to do this and help us to move in a direction we've not been able to achieve so far. So, we request approval of the county's capacity-building contract with Maryland Association of Nonprofit Organizations, and happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Laafferty. Next, we move on to page, next we move on to page 16. Ms. Faith Thomas, Real Estate Compliance Sales Contract.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Council Members.
Good afternoon, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, gentlemen. The Administration is requesting approval of contracts to purchase property related to the Windsor Mill project. The first is a contract to purchase a portion of the property of Cross Creek Associates Limited Partnership for a highway widening area of 1,907 square feet, more or less, and to compensate the owner for a temporary construction easement area of 3,971 square feet, more or less. The contract amount is $7,325, which is based on the appraisal conducted by Real Estate Compliance's in-house appraiser, and the project is for the construction of a sidewalk on Windsor Mill Road.
Any questions, comments from the members? None? Move on to the next contract.
The next is a contract to purchase a portion of the property of David Himmelman for highway widening area of 3,029 square feet, more or less, and 1,112 square feet, more or less, revertable slope area, and 62 square feet, more or less, for drainage and utility area. The contract amount is $10,944, and it's also based on our in-house... The contract amount is $10,944, and it's also based on our in-house real estate appraiser's evaluation.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the members? Next contract.
The next is a contract to purchase a portion of the property of David Himmelman and Mary Ann Himmelman for a highway widening area of 841 square feet, more or less, and to compensate the owner for a temporary construction area of 492 square feet, more or less, and a 70-square-foot, more or less, drainage and utility area. The contract amount is $6,970, which is based on our in-house appraiser's appraisal.
Are there any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much. Ms. Thomas?
Thank you very much.
Sure. Next, we move on to page 22. Amy Horry, property manager. Couple more contracts.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract for Seam Group LLC to provide complete onsite current NFPA 70E electrical and arc flash safety training for electrical personnel. The provided training will keep electrical workers free from hazards of shock, electrocution, arch flash, flash, and arc blast. This bid... This contract was competitively bid, and in no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractor exceed the sum of $252,433.32 during the entire term of this agreement, including the renewals. This agreement is for one year with four one-year renewals and 120 days optional extension. And I can take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? There are none? Move right along to page 26 and the next contract.
The administration is requesting the approval of a contract with BMC Services LLC, Denver Elich Inc., and Temp Air Company to provide all labor, engineering materials, tools, equipment, and supervision for on-call plumbing services. This contract was competitively bid, and in no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractors exceed the sum of $7,920,000 during the entire term of this agreement, including renewals. This agreement is effective for one year with four one-year renewals and an optional 120 days extension. This agreement has a MBE-WB goal of 20%, and two of the three selected vendors are MBE primes. And I can take any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none? Thank you very much, Ms. Horry.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to page 1. I will check. Ms. Danielle Metz. Assistant Firefighter.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, council members. The fire department has been awarded $354,545.45 by the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant for three vehicle acquisitions. This grant award provides funding to purchase vehicles for Baltimore County Fire Department's Office of Integrated Health. The creation of Mobile Integrated Health Program allows for expansion of the current eye care program. This will create mobile units, which will expand the ability to engage with clients in real time and connect to resources. The fire department will use BC Stat's Familiar Faces Program to identify at-risk individuals and high utilizers to target for services. The required local share of this award is $35,454.55. The performance period of the award is from August 9th, 2023, to August 8th, 2025. This bill will allow the county to accept the federal award.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to page 4. Lawrence Richardson. Am I public swimming pools? That when kids jump in their neighbor's pool without their permission?
No, that's not included. But good afternoon, Chairman Jones, members of the council. The administration is seeking your approval of Bill 7823, which will amend Baltimore County Code regarding the definition of semi-public swimming pools. Currently, historically, all commercial pools in the county were defined as public pools and required to have a lifeguard on site. In 2020, the County Council Bill 1120 added a definition for semi-public swimming pool to the Baltimore County Code and allowed for facilities with this designation to forego providing a lifeguard. This definition is in conflict with the current state definition of a semi-public swimming pool within COLMAR. Specifically, the code... The county code currently allows many gyms and health clubs in Baltimore County to forego providing a lifeguard when minors are present, and there is potential for some multi-pool facilities to forego providing a lifeguard, which are not allowed by COLMAR. So the purpose of this bill is to bring the Baltimore County Code in line with COLMAR concerning semi-public swimming pools and lifeguard requirements at these facilities. Now, any questions?
Thank you, sir. Let's see, we have some questions. Councilman Batoka?
Yes. Mr. Richardson, could you tell me the difference between examples of a public swimming pool and a semi-public swimming pool?
So the way COLMAR defines a semi-public swimming pool is a swimming pool with a water surface of under 2,500 square feet and a maximum depth of five feet.
Repeat that? I'm sorry.
A swimming pool with a... A currently semi-public swimming pool is a pool with a water surface of... An area of under 2,500 square feet and a maximum depth of five feet. So we're modifying that to be 2,500 square feet requirement qualifying a pool can be part of the facility of multiple pools with a single enclosure with a combined water surface of 2,500 square feet. So for facilities that may have multiple pools, we need to make sure that they would all be included.
So it's defined by size rather than ownership? If it's, you know, owned by Baltimore County, then it would be viewed as a public swimming pool?
It's made to include transient locations such as hotels, motels, and gyms and spas.
So hotels would be required to have lifeguards or no?
No. Hotels would still be required to have signage of swim at your own risk. It would be the health clubs that had minors that would be required to have a lifeguard. That's what would put us in line with COLMAR.
So this is... This bill's really just to make us in line with COLMAR, but doesn't have a safety element to it? Are we allowing for a safer environment for swimmers or a less safe environment for swimming? Not necessarily swimmers, but somebody in the water?
No, we... I believe allowing for a safer environment for multiple reasons, having the lifeguards on site. The lifeguards also serve to check the chlorine levels and other levels at the pools, which our health inspectors currently go out and check. So we had a somewhat of an uptick in pools not being in alignment with the current regulations for chlorine levels and that safety end, also for minors within a health facility or spa. So now lifeguard would be required if minors were at a health club.
So this would provide for additional lifeguards or fewer lifeguards?
I would say additional if they were at a health club and the health club allowed minors to swim.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Richardson. Did state regulations change after 2020?
No, they did not.
All right. So I do have a... Just what I understand. So you were giving us a definition, and you were given a size and a depth. But you're saying that this bill would combine multiple pools in different locations of a facility? Count them as one?
It would make that requirement required for facilities that had multiple pools.
And the idea would be so that they would have to have another lifeguard? I'm confused.
So that there would be a lifeguard. It's really more in alignment with COLMAR along the lines of health clubs. In 2020, the change to the definition of semi-public pools that we added to the county code eliminated the need for lifeguards at health clubs, which potentially puts us out of alignment with, or did put us out of alignment with, COLMAR, which requires lifeguards at health clubs when minors are present.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments from the members? Just one comment, Mr. Chair. Right here, Cal?
Just to me, a lifeguard means a job for a young person, so I want to make sure that we... And it creates a safer environment for people enjoying recreating in the water. And so I know we had a bill, I think, in the past, a couple years back, yeah, the kill bill, which was going to kill jobs and potentially, you know, create an environment where people could drown. And so I just want to make sure that that's not what's before us.
Well, this... This bill is to rectify Bill 1120 from 2020.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, yes.
That's what I was going to say, too. This is clearly a realignment because the legislation that we passed put us out of alignment with COLMAR based on the operational definitions of swimming pools.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Any additional questions, comments? Hearing none? Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Next, I'll move on to Councilman Hurtel. Page 6, Bill 7923.
Give me to take this, Chair.
Yes.
So this bill is a kind of a slight modification. There is a zoning classification CB, which is for a community business. And we found out recently that CB allows for all kinds of things, but it doesn't allow for a community building in the sense of... We had an American Legion who bought a CB property and actually can't meet in the building. But all kinds of other things could happen there, like a counseling center, a church, a lot of different other things. So this... I'm happily put this in to help the American Legion in this case, and it's on a commercial corridor, and I just think it's a good bill and will clean up an item that I think was missed in that it's a suitable property for this and should work well.
Thank you, Councilman Hurtel. Are there any questions or comments from the members? All right. Thank you very much, Councilman Hurtel. Next, we'll move on to page 7. Councilman Marks, Bill 8023.
Thank you. This bill is very similar to Councilman Hurtel's bill and would allow a community-oriented use by right if located in the BL zone with a partial community core overlay district. The commercial community core district has, for many years, existed on shopping center properties that serve surrounding neighborhoods with retail and food shopping, restaurants, and other auxiliary service uses such as coffee shops, dry cleaners, and convenience stores. Another natural fit for larger shopping centers that have this community-oriented overlay district is the community building land use category for recreational, educational, and social purposes. For example, child play-oriented facilities where kids from surrounding communities can come for exercise and use equipment like a ball... Excuse me, a ball crawl or a slide, interactive games, have birthday parties, and so on. This legislation is not without limitations. The CCC district must be on the property. Properties to be developed with an existing shopping center, and it has to be large enough to accommodate at least 125,000 square feet of gross floor area. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none? Thank you very much. Now we move on to Resolution, page 30. Resolution 33-23. Sponsors Hurtel, Batoka, Marks, Catch. And we'll move on to Councilman Hurtel.
Okay. So I'm back. This resolution is a... We're asking the State Department of Environment to look at the issues on this particular property where we're looking to develop a property that's essentially a wetland. Is the headwaters for the Herring Run watershed? And we has been for many years was not develop... Was not allowed to be developed on, but was given variances by the county in order to build on this very sensitive property. One of the things that I find very curious is that the county has spent, I think we're up over a million dollars now, or it might even be higher than that, on buying properties downstream from this property that have flooded over many years because of the significant rainstorms that we get now on a fairly regular basis. This property sits as a green space buffer to Historic East Towson, which was a... Is one of our founding African-American communities. It was actually a community that was founded by freed enslaved people from the Hampton Plantation. And this property serves as a, not only a green space buffer to Joppa Road, but also an environmental sponge that takes a lot of the water that comes down the hill from Joppa Road down into the community. So we really want... Would like to have the state take a look at this and look at the flooding maps for this, the watershed. And so I'll leave it at that. I have a couple co-sponsors, and we have several people to speak, so I will leave it to some of the speakers as well.
Councilman Crandall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Hurtel, thank you for introducing this resolution. Mr. Secretary, if you could sign me on as a co-sponsor, please?
Yes, sir.
And the reason that I want to co-sponsor the resolution is quite simply Herring Run feeds into the Back River... Or is part of the Back River watershed and feeds into the Back River. So the 7th District certainly cares about what's happening within that watershed. So I support the resolution, and, you know, I think to ask for... To request the study is an appropriate measure of the situation. Thank you.
Yes. Councilman Mark?
Thank you very much, Councilman Hurtel, for sponsoring this resolution. Thank you to those in the audience from Historic East Towson that I used to represent. It's good to see some familiar faces. Much of my time as a councilman for Towson was spent dealing with flooding issues, purchasing properties along Stevenson Lane, dealing with water mitigation in Idowild and Anisley. And I certainly think that this is an appropriate... And I certainly think that this is an appropriate resolution and it's also extremely important to our Historic East Towson community, which we treasure in Baltimore County. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for all who have come today.
Thank you very much. So I am almost there in terms of throwing my support. I'd like to hear a few speakers first, just to make sure we're not missing anything, especially some of the people that stand against it. But let me just say this. Number one, we pride ourselves on hearing from everyone. We have 18 people signed up to speak. One, two, three, three that are here and all the, maybe four that are here and all the rest are virtual. And with five co-sponsors, it looks like it's going to pass unless somebody says something to change some people's minds. So feel free, when you speak, if someone said something you already, that you, somebody said something you agree with and you're going to repeat the same thing, feel free to say ditto, copy that, whatever. And don't feel like you have to spend all three minutes, because you have three minutes, but you're certainly entitled to do it. So on that note, why don't I call our first speaker, Senator Mary Washington? Always a pleasure. She's joining us online.
She's unmuted, Mr. Chair.
All right. Senator Washington? Senator Washington?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of Senator Washington. I'm her chief of staff, Melanie Wellstein. We are very in support of this motion, and I just wanted to come on and speak a little bit about the 9/11 appeals court of Maryland hearing. The justices did express concern about the two different maps in the Historic East Towson Design Review Panel area and the East Towson Design Standards map. And we would urge that you all take a look at that. But also, we believe that we should not be referencing Red Maple Place, but rather looking at the coordinates as it is a more important area than just that development itself. We would also like to point out that the Maryland Department of the Environment in 2021 came out with a report called the Maryland Storm Water Management Climate Change Action Plan. In this management law, the MDE was required to report on most recent precipitation data available, investigate flooding events since 2000, and update Maryland Storm Water Quantity Management Standards for flood control. These updated regulations will require local jurisdictions, state, and federal agencies to use these watershed studies to implement watershed-specific flood management plans that will include storm water quantity management requirements for new developments, such as this one, accounting for the accumulative watershed impacts of past and future land development. And given that the Herring Run watershed head lies at the aforementioned location, the state and local jurisdictions should have to consider the impact any development may have on the properties downstream according to the state standard. Based upon this standard and this legislation, MDE proposed new regulations in 2023, just a few months ago, citing a need for a fundamental change in how storm water best management practices are evaluated to meet design storm and environmental site design requirements. This is why they propose regulations, which are currently under review, that encompass inclusion of requirements to ensure that no flooding or erosion-related impacts are created from storm water runoff to existing downstream properties, inclusion of requirements to ensure historically overburdened and underserved communities are adequately protected from unmanaged storm water runoff, and to continue to work with local governments, stakeholders, and the public to identify, document, and implement comprehensive solutions to flood-prone areas. The state is proposing these changes because we see how critical this issue is. We would urge the county to hold itself to the same or higher standard. I respectfully urge a favorable report on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, Adria Crutchfield. You may unmute yourself.
And turn your camera on if you like.
You may begin your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm Adria Crutchfield, Executive Director at the Baltimore Regional Housing Partnership. BRHP is dedicated to providing housing assistance and counseling to some of Baltimore's lowest-income families through the Baltimore Housing Mobility Program. Our mandate is to remedy the harm caused by decades of public disinvestment in low-income and minority communities and opportunity hoarding by surrounding jurisdictions. For over 10 years, we have enabled more than 5,000 families to move to areas throughout central Maryland where they have better opportunities for economic mobility. Through our program, over 8,000 children have benefited from the resource-rich communities, diversity, and strong schools they need to thrive. I'm here today representing those families who deserve and desire to live in a safe, healthy, and economically vibrant community such as Towson. It is fitting that we discuss this matter on Halloween. It's time we pull off the mask of Resolution 3323, which alleges that the Red Maple Place development violates Maryland's Forest Conservation Act and asks the Maryland Department of the Environment to study the environmental impact of the development to reveal its true intent to halt the creation of a mixed-income community and to continue the historic pattern of Baltimore County's ongoing exclusion of affordable housing. This thinly veiled attempt to further block this development lies in the face of the county's obligation under the voluntary compliance agreement. The mask of environmentalism that this resolution wears does not hide the vile intent underneath. BRHP requests that the county council vote against Resolution 3323. As I wrote back in March 2022 in an op-ed for Maryland Matters, Baltimore County has a critical need for affordable housing, which has been stymied by local opposition and a volunteer administrative board that has been allowed to compromise, stall, and often kill projects like Red Maple Place based on a misread of county design guidelines. For Baltimore County to meet the benchmarks established by the 2016 conciliation agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, decisions to prevent Red Maple and other developments from moving forward must be reversed. Today's resolution is yet another local attempt, again disguised as an environmental concern, to obstruct the development of Red Maple Place and other affordable housing in opportunity areas and thereby defeat ongoing efforts to further fair housing choice and abide by the Fair Housing Act. BRHP partners with housing providers like Homes for America to create opportunities for low-income and working-class families to live in high-opportunity areas with jobs, quality of life, and well-funded school systems. Towson is one example of a highly desirable location, and that makes Red Maple Place an ideal project. The developer has made commitments to preserve the landscape by stabilizing the hillside, planting more trees, and installing storm water management devices. Further, Red Maple Place will be an asset to the community and a lifeline to many families. The 56-home community is designed to serve families in a four-story building that will be a mixed-income community, serving a range of incomes and populations from families earning less than 30% and up to 60% of the area's median income, as well as unrestricted market rate units. Forty-six percent, or 49,000, renter households of all incomes in Baltimore County are cost burdened, paying more than 30% of their income towards housing costs, and 24% or 25,000 are severely cost burdened, paying more than 50% of their income towards housing costs, according to HUD data. With this critical need in mind, I urge the county council to withdraw Resolution 3323 and take all necessary steps to support the Red Maple Place development. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Crutchfield. Appreciate your comments. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Phoebe Evans-Latoka, who is here in person. And I apologize if I mispronounced her name.
Good afternoon. My name is Phoebe Evans-Latoshian. I'm here as the Vice President of the Towson Communities Alliance, a nonprofit umbrella organization representing the interests and concerns of more than 30 community associations in the greater Towson area. TCA strongly supports Resolution 3323 to explore the potential adverse environmental impact of further development along the headwaters of the Herring One Rudder Shed in Historic East Towson. The headwaters sit just south of Joppa Road in East Towson, and I'm sure we've got representatives from Historic, the Northeastern Towson Improvement Association in Harris Hills condominiums who've experienced erosion and flooding in their neighborhoods. I also want to talk about how our downstream communities have also been impacted by flooding, particularly from, you know, from Historic East Towson. The Herring Run continues into Towson Manor Village and then Eggbirth Manor Association, where it runs along Rated Bowl Park. The county invested a million and a half dollars to purchase and develop Rated Bowl Park, plus additional state funds. Upon exiting the park, it crosses Eggbirth Road and runs alongside the border between Eggbirth Vale Historic Site and Towson High before bisecting the Towson High Campus. Towson High is about to undergo a major capital construction project to rebuild the school with a combined state and county investment of over $150 million. Towson High Campus has experienced flooding and erosion on its campus, particularly the baseball field, along the bridges that make up the proposed Six Bridges Trail. Students regularly walk the trails, bridges, to get to and from school every day. The western branch of the Herring Run then flows through the neighborhoods of Wiltendale and Noelwood before crossing into the Overbrook Improvement Association. Along Worthington Road, homeowners experienced such regular flooding that the county spent over $3 million to purchase and demolish six houses in 2016. And just this year, the county had to purchase two additional houses slated for demolition, where the bridge driveway that provided access across the stream floods and was deemed unsafe. That is millions of dollars that the county had to pay to address the damage of decades of flooding caused by our neighbors and causing our neighbors to be displaced. These homes sat at a choke point of the stream where the inadequate culvert causes water to back up before crossing under Stevenson Lane to the Maryland Country Club property. Within the Country Club, the western branch picks up an additional stream that runs underground through the Stonely neighborhood, past Stonely Elementary School, before feeding into the Herring Run on the golf course. Stonely has experienced street flooding at its low point along Kingston Road from inadequate storm water management systems that the county just had to rebuild at the cost of a million dollars. Upon exiting the Country Club, the western branch then runs through the Idowild neighborhood and Overlook Park along the border of Glendale, Glenmont, and then Lock Hill, where additional flooding has occurred around the area where it crosses Register Avenue. It then crosses into Baltimore City, where the Herring Run Park Trail recently had to be closed to recreational use due to flooding from storms just this past month that dangerously eroded the trail. It then exits the city, back into Baltimore County, and Rosedale, and then empties into the Back River in Essex. And I thank Mr. Crandall for his support on this resolution. I hope my journey along the Herring Run Trail through our Towson Community Alliance neighborhoods into Baltimore City and back into the county has illuminated the level of financial investment the county and state have made into this land before any additional impervious services are built at the headwaters. It behooves the state and county to study the potential adverse environmental impact of building on that property would place on our downstream communities and our public facilities, including our parks, our trails, and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, and thank you for coming here today. Phoebe, one sec.
Thank you. Phoebe, thank you for providing the testimony of a person who lives in Towson. And I feel like listening to you and hearing all these things we all worked on the past 10 years, and they're all related. So thank you for the way you wove that all together.
Thank you, yes. So I'm representing all of these communities that are part of our Towson Communities Alliance. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Councilman Marks, I think the previous speaker was from Silver Spring.
Silver Spring.
I think so.
I'm not sure. I thank you to other persons, Charles, whatever. Yes, next speaker, Senator Washington?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Senator Washington was able to log on, so.
Okay, hello. I don't know if you- Okay, I have to start. Thank you. It's been a while since I've done WebEx. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, very good. Okay. Good to see everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity. I am real, I'm State Senator Mary Washington, and here I am testifying in my capacity as living, of course, downstream on the Herring Run, but also as the state senator that represents the greater Towson area. I am extremely sympathetic and applaud the county for seeking to provide low-income housing. We need to have that. But I think the question here today, and it's unfair to pit affordable housing versus environmental justice or environmental impacts. This, this opportunity that we have before us is to stop what has been a systematic eroding, not only of the East Towson community, but also frankly of the Herring Run watershed, as was noted earlier. We go back, or this issue of not addressing the environmental impacts on communities can go back to, oh, and in 19, I guess, 68. The Negro League, the baseball communities, the, the really vibrant communities of the, the woods was demolished and knocked down by BGE when they wanted to install the power substation. You also have a cutting through of the community when you wanted to create the bypass. I think the issue here is that this community, this watershed, has paid the price systemically, you know, of the development of the greater Towson area, but of the greater of Baltimore County. So I think as the state, we learned a huge lesson with the flood of Elicott City. The developer, at the time, they were given a variance. They made all sorts of promises about their abilities to use technology and other, other efforts to mitigate water runoff, and we know what happened there. If you, all you have to do is walk that property and see this, this, that. Imagine just putting a huge building on top of this is absolutely going to have the impacts. In contrast to the NIMBYism that has happened, I think, in the past, we cannot be accused of that. This is not only TCA, not only East Towson, but as was discussed earlier, those of us who live farther down the watershed have, also have an impact. So thank you for this, this opportunity. You heard from my chief of staff that the state, I think we stand ready to fill our promise in supporting the identification of priority areas for mitigation. That's what this is about. So, Council, I guess I want to say this isn't about not having affordable housing. This really isn't just about East Towson. This really is about Baltimore County, and I'm grateful for your responsibility as councilpeople to step up and say, we want to partner with our state to identify priority areas or areas that are potential for flooding. And I think this is a prime area for such a study. So thank you, Councilmen. Thank you, Council President. I appreciate this opportunity, and I look forward to continuing to, to work with you. I believe in affordable housing. I believe and support Baltimore County's desire to fulfill its requirement by HUD to have affordable housing by 2027. But we cannot, it isn't a matter of whether or not you do it, it's that, is this the right place to do it? So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator Washington. Thank you very much for your comments. Any questions or comments?
Any questions, I stand, I stand ready. Oh, I think I just had one, one thing, if you don't mind. I think in the, in its current draft, we, we would welcome you to be more specific about the ask, and feel free to refer- the ask, and feel free to refer to legislation that was passed in 2021, where MDE and the state will assist you in this, in this process. And as your representative, I will do my best to ensure that any costs associated with such an investigation and, and follow-up is not solely borne by, by local government.
Okay, if you can hold on, Senator, Councilman Katz?
Hello, Mary.
Hello. Good to see you, former delegate.
Yes, good to see you too. Elgitt Young is here as well.
Yes, I see, yes.
I, listening to the opponent that has spoken on this bill...
Yeah.
The one thing that really bothers me, and I know the members of the council are tired of hearing about it, but, you know, it seems as though some people would rather have those who want a better education and move out of the neighborhood that they're in, and those who are playing with schools are better. I don't think there's any excuse for bad schools anywhere.
Yes.
And we need, and, and I know all the state has done to try to improve our schools, and I just like your opinion of that. And plus, I'll say, I represent from the Beltway North to the Pennsylvania line, and I can name a number of communities, black communities, that have been destroyed by government, thinking, "Well, since this is a black community, we'll just build a road through it, and we'll do this, we'll do that." And, you know, I just think it's disgraceful, as I do, what is happening with East Towson, should Red Maple go through. And, and I thank you for your support. You know that Baltimore County has a terrible problem with stormwater management. We built communities years ago without requirements in place to deal with the stormwater issue, and more and more, when it rains, we have the east, the west side of the county, more and more flooded.
Yes.
So, I thank you for your support of this resolution.
And, 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 thank you. I do think that you should contemplate the homelessness that may be caused when downstreams are flooded, when the homes just south of such a development are flooded. Where are those families going to go? And you're absolutely right, there is no reason to, our solution for poor schooling or, or less than... Every single school should be the best school, every single child, regardless of zip code, and we are investing as a state in that. And once again, it is pitting to, this argument, this line of argument, is pitting two historically vulnerable groups of people against each other, and I find it offensive. It is not an either-or. These communities have been environmentally impacted, they've been economically impacted, and I applaud this county council's willingness to stand up and say, "We are no longer going to do this. You have already passed laws, and, and you already have maps that have stated that this is a special area." And I believe the courts want you to further clarify that, and I just see this as a further clarification and protecting the communities that are currently there, but certainly not the idea of keeping out people who deserve good housing and, and quality schools. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Again, it's good seeing you here.
Good seeing you too.
Thank you again, Senator Washington. Any additional questions, comments from the members? Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Sonia Brethwaite. Ms. Brethwaite, you are, one is a panelist, you may unmute yourself and certainly turn your camera on and begin your testimony.
Okay. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I am not able to turn on my camera for some reason, so I will just continue this way. Hello, everybody, my name is Sonia Brethwaite, and I am here to oppose Resolution Number 3323 that seeks to block the development of Red Maple Place. I'm here as a board member of the Baltimore Regional Housing Partnership, and as Adrienne stated earlier, it's a nonprofit organization that expands housing choices for families with low incomes who have historically been excluded from housing in a safe, healthy, and economically vibrant communities. Red Maple is exactly the type of housing that our families and many families need. It's located in a vibrant area with access to jobs, good schools, recreation, retail, healthcare, and more. It's also the type of housing that Baltimore County needs if it has any hope of reaching its voluntary compliance agreement goal of 1,000 affordable housing units. As of today, Baltimore County has more than 300 units off that mark. Red Maple Place will provide 56 apartment units, the majority of which, 29, will be for families making between $62,000 and $72,000 per year. These units would allow teachers, police officers, firefighters, nurses, and other hardworking individuals who have been priced out of the housing market to finally afford to live where they work. Only 10 of the units will be set aside for low-income families that are eligible to receive housing vouchers. Resolution Number 3323 seeks to block Red Maple Place, citing a desire to protect the area from commercial encroachment from the Towson Commercial Corps, but this development is for housing and only housing. There is no retail or commercial activity included in the development. As stated, the resolution also lists concerns for headwaters of a branch of the Herring Run stream and associated wetland, and note that the site would violate Maryland's Conservation Act. However, only 50% of the two-and-a-half acre site will be developed. The entire building will actually be outside of the East Housing Community Conservation Area and African-American Survey District. The rest of the site would be left alone, and the forest streams, vegetation, and wetlands within the East Towson Community would also be left alone. This undisturbed parcel of the site would be on the neighborhood side and will continue to be a perpetual preservation easement and therefore remain open space. Thus, more than an acre of undisturbed green space will remain in the neighborhood. Moreover, Red Maple Place will front Joppa Road, and all entry and exit points will be on Joppa Road, so it will not impact the traffic or street space along Pennsylvania Avenue at all, beyond the sidewalks. The resolution also noted the concern for erosion and flooding in the area. However, in 2021, the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability, DPE, asked, determined that Red Maple Stormwater Management Facilities would actually be an improvement to the uncontrolled water flow problem and would greatly benefit the surrounding properties. As mentioned earlier, the hillside would be stabilized, more trees would be planted, and existing drainage issues associated with the nearby inlet would be repaired as a result of this development. Everyone in Baltimore County needs more affordable housing, and moderate-income residents deserve access to affordable housing in high-opportunity areas free from crime, but no one seems to want affordable housing in their neighborhood. The result is that affordable housing isn't being built. Resolution Number 3323 is yet another attempt to use environmental concerns and changing zoning laws to keep affordable housing far away from single-family neighborhoods. And unlike the predatory behavior that has happened in the past in respect to East Towson, with the building of highways and a power substation and other horrible things, Red Maple is proposing residential housing. It has already been determined that Red Maple Place will not adversely impact the environment along the headwaters. Moreover, the request for an environmental study after the DPE has already concluded that the development would actually improve the water flow in the area, it's simply a stalling tactic. Therefore, I ask that this resolution be withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker, Mr. Chair, is Ryan Coleman, who is on virtually, but I do not see Mr. Coleman on, um, let me double-check here.
Hey, Mr. Coleman, going once, going twice. If you log on later, we'll plug you in.
Yes, I don't see him on there.
Bel Castro?
Certainly. Our next speaker is Dana Johnson. You are one as a panelist, you may unmute yourself and turn your camera on and begin your testimony.
No audio, we can't hear you. We see you, but we can't hear you. Not yet.
She's unmuted, but we can't hear.
Okay, why don't you continue to work on that? Leave her up, and just go on to the next person while she fixes her, fix her microphone, check your microphone. Can you hear me?
I don't think she has any audio either. Ms. Johnson, can you hear us? Yes, but we can't hear you. I meant, I have you unmuted, can you speak?
Why don't we, uh...
Okay.
Next, and she can stay online until she figures it out.
Well, we'll work on that. Our next speaker is Nancy Goldring, who is here in person.
Hello, Mrs. Goldring. Ms. Goldring, sorry. I called you Mrs. Goldring, I'm sorry. Ms., Ms. Goldring.
Good afternoon to the Chair and the gentlemen of the council. I am here as a lifelong resident of historic East Towson and a seventh-generation descendant, not only from East Towson, but my ancestors descended from Hampton. National, today, National Historic Site wants an industrial plantation, and I am not here to argue the environmental concerns, per se. They are as obvious in terms of their need to be investigated as any of the others. What I am thankful to Councilman Artell for presenting is a resolution that grants us historic designation along with this resolution. Historic designation, as I understand it, starts at 50 years, and East Towson is 170 years old. And so, to whatever degree historic designation offers protections to historic East Towson that would not have us in an argument around what should be built here and what shouldn't be, I think it's high time to bring that argument to a close. I think it is also disingenuous to claim that we do not want affordable housing in East Towson. East Towson is affordable housing for Towson. And I think there have been statistics that show that bringing a development such as Red Maple Place to East Towson amounts more to a concentration of poverty than the introduction of a much-needed affordable housing residence. In fact, there are 53 units of affordable housing in East Towson already, called Hendrickson Lane, and so, how we find ourselves in this place to begin with is because affordability expires, and no one wants to acknowledge that fact. Forty years from now, 40 years ago, 40-plus years ago, when I was about 14 years old, those properties went up, and lots of families went into them. Other CDC programs, such as Harris Hill, were brought to Towson also to allow for affordability. To, so to say that affordable housing has not been attempted and brought to housing, I'm sorry, and brought to Towson, again, inaccurate. However, as I said, to whatever extent historic designation protects the community, it more than deserves it. Again, I thank you, Councilman Artell, for bringing the resolution. Thank you, David Marks, Councilman Marks, for your years of service. My grandmother was a huge fan of yours, and you did as much as you could to protect our community while you were there. Councilman Jones, Councilman Crandall, thank you for signing on. Councilman Katz, Councilman Patoka, thank you all for your support of East Towson in my term and over the years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Goldring, for your continued advocacy and service to the community. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, I just want to note that Ms. Johnson, I was going to let me know when she's ready. Our next speaker, registered speaker, is Joanne Williams-Robinson, but apparently she is not on, so I will go on to the next speaker, who is Michael Ventura, who is here in person. So, our next speaker, Mr. Chair, would be Amy Turner, who is on virtually. Ms. Turner is not on as well. Let me refresh one more time. So, our next one would be Sherri Evans, who is here in person.
Welcome, Ms. Evans.
Afternoon has passed.
Evening, that's right.
I'm Sherri Evans, Sherri Goldring Evans. I am a long-life resident of the East Towson Community, and when this, when Senator Washington was speaking about the watershed issue and how it would affect the community, I would be affected directly. My property is what's known as the Wilson Property, which is the gateway to Black and Decker's and right off of Joppa Road. So, when it rains, I already have a flooded basement, every time it rains, because the water comes up from the ground into my basement. So, once that, if Red Maple is placed on where the green space is, I'm going to be washed out, because there's no other way that the water, that my yard, my house, can take that much more water. Every year, I'm buying a new sub-pump, because it's constantly running when it rains. I don't care if we have just a little brief shower, if the ground gets wet enough, that water comes up through the concrete in my basement, and my basement is completely wet. So, at this point, I haven't had to buy a new furnace yet, but I have had to replace my washer and dryer twice because of flood damage. That, I am also a member of the oldest African-American church in Towson, the St. James AUMP Church, and, which was built by freed slaves from Delaware and from Kent County. That neighborhood is a unique neighborhood, it's not for everybody. Everybody cannot live in that community. That, that community has placed values and, and customs and systems in our life that allowed us to be able to, once we, we grew up and came and, and got married and moved away and those type of things, it allowed us to want to come back. We were drawn back to that community because of what it stood for and what it meant to us. So, I would be in support of the community becoming historic, that Red Maple, and I'm not against affordable housing. I've worked 44 years at the Baltimore County Department of Social Services with families who I had to help find affordable housing. It's just not, um, it's not for our community. We don't have space for that type of building where they want to put it because of the water issues that we have. So, I hope that you would consider all that's being said this evening, and I thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much for coming out, sharing your comments with us, as well as your years of service in the Department of Social Service. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Frye. Ms. Frye, you are on as a panelist, you may unmute yourself and also turn your camera on if you prefer, and begin your testimony.
There we go. Can y'all see me? Okay. All right, well, thank you. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all this evening regarding Resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-three. My name's Kim Frye, and I am a proud resident of District Number Five in Baltimore County, and I'm here today to state my opposition to Resolution thirty-three twenty-three. And just to give you some context, I've worked my entire career, thirty-plus years, in affordable housing industry. I've had the opportunity to work in all disciplines, real estate development, finance, property management operations, residence services. In the last fifteen years, I've worked as a consultant, and am currently a retainer with two national affordable housing membership organizations. In addition to being Homes for America Board Member, I'm also the former Executive Director of the Maryland Affordable Housing Coalition and Board Member of N A H C. And I'd like to note that Homes for America has a long history and a successful, they enjoy a very successful reputation for doing good work throughout the state of Maryland. As a nonprofit, they remain committed to being part of each community they develop and provide meaningful and impactful supportive services to the residents they serve, which is really the hallmark of what Homes for America is all about. I can also note that through a highly competitive process, the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development recognized that Homes for America and the Red Maple Development was most deserving of receiving the scarce resources that they allocate annually, and this is based upon Homes for America's past work, as well as the fact that these funds would be helping to serve and provide for the highest and best use. As you know, there's a critical and unmet need for more affordable housing, and I'd like to note that since Baltimore County is currently under obligation to further fair housing through the executed voluntary compliance agreement, the Red Maple Development will actually help the county to meet their obligations. Finally, it's my understanding that Homes for America has already received all the necessary and required development plan approvals to include storm management, water management remediation, to move the Red Maple community forward. Homes for America has been working under good faith to execute on those plans, to help create high-quality development that will help provide much-needed, service-enriched, affordable housing that complements the neighborhood, to allow Baltimore County's low- and moderate-income constituents to have the opportunity to live in a high-opportunity area. And so today, tonight, I'm asking if you, and I'd like to encourage the council to not pass Resolution thirty-three twenty-three. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. Thank you for sharing your comments with us. Next speaker, Ms. Val Castro. Oh, Ms. Frye, I'm sorry. Kimberly Frye, sorry.
Our next speaker is Karen Walker, who is here in person.
Hi, Ms. Walker. How are you?
Good evening, Councilman. My name is Karen Walker. I'm an original member of East Towson. I grew up in East Towson. I learned all my values from growing up in East Towson, and I don't want to repeat a lot of things that people have already said, but I just want to thank Mr. Artell for having, being courageous enough to speak up for us so that hopefully we can become a historic district. Three, several things that have already been said, and I don't want to keep repeating it, is we already have three affordable housing complexes in East Towson. The second thing is we only have one green space left in East Towson, and the third thing is systematically, the traffic has been... directly impacted our community to relieve congestion north-south on, from York Road, from Bosley Avenue actually, up through Towson to Joppa Road, and also, the traffic has been systematically ran through our community west-east through East Towson, where we cannot even get through our community safely in the mornings and the evenings. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Walker. Thank you so much for coming out, sharing your comments with us. Next speaker, Ms. Val Castro.
Our next speaker, Mr. Chair, is Beth Miller. Ms. Miller, you are on as a panelist.
And Ms. Walker, you're for the resolution, right? You've...
I corrected the speaker sheet. She must have hit the wrong button.
I figured you were.
Yeah, I'm not in two places at one time. Thank you, Council Chair Jones and other members of the county council for the opportunity to testify on behalf of the Green Towson Alliance in support of Resolution thirty-three dash twenty-three. First, I would like to clarify something that has been said. Developers commonly claim that an undeveloped site does not have stormwater management, and therefore, development which includes stormwater management will be an improvement. On the contrary, stormwater management is required by development laws to compensate for the removal of pervious surfaces that absorb rain. Because of the size of the building, configuration of the site, and presence of wetlands and streams, there's not enough room for environmental site design that most closely approximates the way natural systems like wooded areas absorb rain, which is the first priority for stormwater management. Please note that the developer rejected the suggestion of providing a green roof on the building, which is one of these environmental site design techniques. Before 2019, I doubt many Towson residents outside Historic East Towson knew the headwaters of the Herring Run's western branch are located on a property between Joppa Road and East Pennsylvania Avenue in Historic East Towson. I certainly didn't. I have never seen it identified on a map, but the headwaters and anonymity belies their importance. American Rivers, an organization devoted to protecting our rivers from a multitude of threats, has issued a report titled, "Where Rivers Are Born: The Scientific Imperative for Defending Small Streams and Wetlands." This report states, "Our nation's network of rivers, lakes, and streams originates from a myriad of small streams and wetlands, many so small that they do not appear on any map. Yet these headwater streams and wetlands exert critical influences on the character and quality of downstream waters. The special physical and biological characteristics of intact small streams and wetlands provide natural flood control, recharge groundwater, trap sediment, and pollution from fertilizers, recycle nutrients, create and maintain biological diversity, and sustain the biological productivity of downstream rivers, lakes, and estuaries. Even when such systems have no visible overland connections to the stream network, small streams and wetlands are usually linked to the larger network through groundwater. Baltimore County has lost design to protect waterways and wetlands with appropriate forest buffers, but this development proposal was only feasible through an environmental variance to reduce the required one-hundred-foot forest buffer to twenty-five feet from the wetlands boundary. That's a seventy-five percent reduction. The currently wooded lot in Historic East Towson provides tremendous value to the community in the form of cleaner air, cooler temperatures, wildlife habitat, mental and physical health, and improved water quality. Collated woodpeckers, raccoons, owls, foxes, hawks, and Baltimore orioles are just some of the animals using these woods as habitat. These headwaters need protection and restoration, not development. I call on the county council to support Resolution thirty-three dash twenty-three."
Thank you so much. Appreciate it very much. Thank you for your comments, again. Next speaker, Ms. Val Castro.
Our next registered speaker was Rochelle Williams. Ms. Williams is not on the WebEx. Our next speaker was Matt Hill. Mr. Hill is also not on the WebEx. Our next speaker is Priscilla Carroll. Ms. Carroll, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony. Ms. Carroll.
I didn't intend to testify. I am delighted to hear the extremely reasonable discussion that's being held, and I urge the county council to pass this resolution and protect what is left of East Towson and its fabulous history, as well as the environmental system, which is all part of that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Next speaker, Ms. Val Castro.
Our final registered speaker was Annette Smith. Ms. Smith is also not on the WebEx. I can certainly return to Ms. Johnson. She hasn't messaged me, but I can check and see if she's...
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey. Okay. Thank you for your patience with my tech issues, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on the bill. My name is Dana Johnson, and I'm President of Homes for America. We are the nonprofit developer of Red Maple Place. We are a mission-focused housing organization with a proven track record of providing high-quality homes for families, seniors, and persons with disabilities. This development serves a critical need in Baltimore County by providing homes for the county's essential workforce in downtown Towson with access to quality schools, jobs, and transit. Further, because this development will provide housing that the county is mandated to produce under the current B C A, we will be marketing the homes specifically to African-American residents to address past decades of blatant housing discrimination in the county. For the benefit of the new council members, I would like to provide some facts about the development. We have been working on this since 2018 to develop a modest-sized building of fifty-six apartments on Joppa Road on a site that has been zoned for over a hundred units for decades. During the first two years, we had support from neighborhood leaderships and Councilman Marks. During that time, we had many small group and larger group meetings with the surrounding community. In response to some feedback from the community, we re-engineered the building location at significant additional cost, which required a law change that Councilman Marks introduced and this council approved. This council also denied a request during that time period to downzone the property. Since late 2020, however, Councilman Marks and now other members of this council have tried to derail this development. We have a fully-approved development plan that every county department has reviewed and approved. This means our stormwater plan is fully engineered and meets all requirements. We will be providing a hundred-year flood vault that, with the construction of the building, that will capture water runoff and improve the current situation where stormwater is running unabated down the hillside where the trees are in poor condition. We have also committed to preserve in perpetuity the green space on the half of the property that faces Pennsylvania Avenue. The cost that we have incurred to develop fully-engineered and designed site and building plans, legal fees, third-party reports, is well over a million dollars, which we have spent in good faith, with support from this council and the county administration. Efforts like Resolution thirty-three twenty-three send a terrible message to the business community and housing developers in particular, and with the current housing crisis in the county, that should give you concern. I encourage you not to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Yes, if you can hold on one minute. First of all, thank you so much for your comments, and I'm not sure if Councilman Marks has a comment for you.
I don't have a question for her, I have a comment.
Okay.
We hear a lot of witnesses, and I guess some think they're blessed with gifts of clairvoyance. I have never supported this project. I have supported efforts to try to minimize the size of this project. I spent years engaging the Historic East Towson community and trying to find a compromise, and unfortunately, there were some who had a very adversarial approach, a steamroller-type approach, and I regret that it has come to this. The facts are this: This council has not taken any action on Red Maple. This is the council that was elected in 2022, not the council that was elected in 2018. That's fact number one. Fact number two is that there is insufficient local support for this project, which will have a deleterious impact, many people believe, on the community and the environment. And thirdly, the previous council did pass legislation trying to address the design of this project, and you heard Ms. Murphy mention the fact that at least one of the levels of the courts, they looked at that, and they said this was not the appropriate project to move forward. So, I just want to make it very clear, I have not supported this project. I spent years trying to come to a compromise on this project, and unfortunately, we didn't get there.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Are there any questions or comments from the members? I know it's been a very long day. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Happy Halloween.
All right, all right, wait a minute, wait a minute, Councilman Artell. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, now you can say it.
Happy Halloween, number one.
Thank you. Looked better the first time. All right, everyone, thanks for attending. Appreciate all the callers, appreciate everybody coming in, and everybody have a happy Halloween, be safe, and may God bless you all. Thank you. Bye.